Okay. Right. Oh, no, anybody here up? Kelly, Father. Please help people of Oklahoma County by having us make great decisions for them. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, our own God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the end of the world, please help people. Amen.
Roll call.
Yax.
Here.
Small.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Brimmond.
I'll make motion improvements for the underhang seats. Second. And especially. Second. There's something?
Yeah, right there.
Seconded, uh, I was there. Uh, hi. Those bows. Motion carries. Oh, geez, look at them all. The whole company. Right into claims. Can you believe it?
Sure, I like it.
I would like to make motion to approve preauthorized claims and open claims presented for payment between November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and December second, two thousand twenty-five, for check numbers one five nine four one eight to one five nine five one six, and E checks two seven seven three to two seven eight five, for a grand total of six hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred one dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Who decided to do seconded by myself? Um, any questions, comments? Roll call.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brimmond.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Next up, final handbook approval. Um, it should all be amended according to the last meeting we had. Last handbook workshop. I would like to make motion to reprove these. Handbook as presented. Hard work. Moved started by Craig.
Effective January first?
Yep. All right, well, say we had a session.
Do we have? Are we sure that? All the other elected officials are on this time line? Yes.
Well, I'm having verbal assurance, but they will be requested. They'll be requested to sign.
Oh, yes, yeah. But I didn't want to. Have one of them. I don't know how it could happen, but say, oh, no, no, I don't want to expect them in seven days.
Could be, but, uh. I guess I'll flip that bridge when it arrives. I don't have a verbal. Oh, I do not have verbal. I don't have any, any, any education, but we'll. Formular request, but when, uh, the situation arises, somebody refuses and a little hangover at that point. Um, talk to, uh. Part of the, uh, things brought up in the handbook was the, uh, top time scenario decisions that we may have thought that was just pay the active time. And we had a chat with Jennifer Lewis from courts morning, and she was, uh, okay with doing that also. It's anybody who's willing. Anything else about the handbook?
Longevity. That was determined that it would be effective. With data to handbook, so anybody that had their, uh. Anniversary date prior to it wasn't an effect until January, and so it doesn't affect them.
Okay. As we discussed, okay. All right, um, then we'll have a roll call.
Brimmond.
Yeah.
Small.
Yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Wait a minute, library board member.
So move. Um, to approve the recommendations from the library board for the appointment of farfuski. Just play for your turn.
Oh, I have to abstain from this.
Again, you support it. It might be smart if you go, yes.
Movement supported, yeah, it was carried on the day. What with a heavy heart, uh, I will support this. Actually. Like you're. Brother. Um, any more kind of concern? I was a favor.
Hi, hi.
All right. Always both like that. Motion carries. She's the current, uh.
She is the current chair chair.
Yeah. That would be the Easter time that she didn't show up to the. Should have brought her to the budget meeting, but. That's right. I let her know about it Thanksgiving. Um, that is done. Finance report, we got a couple of budgets to look at today. Um. We had a, a, a bunch of information come in in the last couple of days. So, um, I'm not a hundred percent ready that we should talk about the whole entire one-on-one budget at this point, but we can cover these two and would everybody be available for nine AM next Thursday to do a. Just a budget meeting and we can have serious talk about cuts and what we gotta do to. Sizzle stuff up. That being said, official announcement, and I'll send an email for finance to all, for all department heads that. Um, if it doesn't. Changes don't make it in by Friday, the fi- the finance email, then we're not going to talk about it this year. Have to go to next year because we're just out of time to make any more changes. That being said, um, we can start with, I think Jen said she was going to come down and wait earlier than I told her when you'd be ready.
Um, quick question on the budgets, Adam, or, um. Do you guys want me to try and get it to you sooner before Thursday so you can take time to work on it instead of getting worried on this? Okay, all right. I will try to get that to you by Tuesday.
Yeah, if you can.
Oh, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll work on it. As long as I got everything. Provided to me, I'll. I'll double check everything and.
So.
Send it off to you.
If they, if we get that email on Tuesday, I would encourage everybody between Tuesday and Thursday to look it over and make some notes and. Where you think some changes should and can be made. So we have a quicker conversation on Thursday about it.
You know, also do like a percentage of the increases with each department too, so you can, that kind of helps to see and try to populate everything in your hand.
That would be great.
For each department.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um. So we'll start with, uh, Tony's budget here. The, uh. Veteran. They're just paying in total of over seven thousand six. Young. Is less than. Previous years. Which they, oh, they're. Better service fund grant. He knows that really for that.
No, and I don't think it's been determined yet. I didn't have been in the last two meetings, but I think there's still waiting. Had to reapply. Was some things.
Okay, so it's off during the air.
Around, yeah.
One of the things he did ask me to bring up to the board in regards to insurance, he said he has not received a bill or nothing has been studied in regards to them paying for some, I don't know if it's the building insurance, I'm not sure what the prior agreement was, but he didn't know. If he was going to need to be paying that for next year.
Did we, we, we hit it around and tried to talk about.
So I can just walk out, so when she comes back, we can ask her, because, um, I have given, that was one of the questions he did. He said, I wasn't sure, he said on that, I haven't heard anything, I haven't received a bill even for this year. I thought he said so.
Is there a number for last year, what were you?
Um, well, let's see, year to date. Uh, let's see, what line I don't use.
Insurance auto.
I think that's it, I think that's it. Auto. So it looks like he did pay six seventy-nine eighty-eight, so.
In the, I think it is the building, but maybe they're wondering are they going to get a bill for. Insurance on the building, and I don't know how we've. Did we do that with EMS?
I'm gonna say no, I don't remember doing that. I, I don't, I can't sit here and intelligently speak to you how that sounds, but I've heard it though.
Well, they came up at our last meeting, they said it was hard to, it can be difficult when you do that after having those five years on the night.
Right now we'll do it to program by program. It's one big.
Are they not paying unemployment insurance?
What comes coming?
Pardon?
Well, they got six hundred. For this year.
When he hasn't spent.
Are they, they pay that personally every month, though? Or does that volunteer, I should know that, but I don't.
Well, now have anybody hired?
Yeah, so they're, yeah, exactly.
That's only Tony. Uh, the Tony's part-time wife, but, but she's not.
I appreciate the fact that she stepped in. When we needed her and so on. But. In zoom away. If Tony goes on vacation. She's gonna stay here and work.
Well, they. She fills in at the window and I think they have Mrs., uh. What's her name?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, she's there most of the time. I don't, I don't actually think Tony's wife has done much. Over the last year. As far as, nobody fills in for Tony, they just fill in at the window.
Well. You, you couldn't.
Right.
Because she did.
No, what would happen if they don't come on the town?
That, that bundle. No, don't deny.
Here's, here's interesting though, if you look here, Sally Wade's part-time. They budgeted twelve seven. Twenty-six amended to seventeen two five, but didn't only pay over a hundred and four dollars.
So. That was their, their hope, they were hoping to hire a part-time.
Okay, so they never would.
And didn't do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now they're budgeting again to hire a person.
Yeah.
Which is this is out of their funds, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they're from that's. And they, there's big. Cat wolves in it.
Yeah, let's leave it in there. There's a question, uh, Stephanie about. Uh, unemployment insurance. And the, and the veteran's budget, line seven nineteen zero zero zero.
That's in everyone's budget. And we, we don't pay that, they must have back in the day.
Okay.
Nobody, no departments put. It was pretty much taken out of most of the department's lines.
Okay.
But when you run it, it runs it for every line item that was ever created for that.
Got it.
Cause there used to be co-insurance and. Re, it's, uh, HR reimbursement line items, those were basically pulled because we don't utilize those lines anymore. So unemployment insurance, nobody.
Okay, so they are in some budgets. People budgeted that, so we have to take those out. Mm-hmm. Okay, so Tony's will take out.
Movement to the community.
Okay. I started deleting it out of the lines and then was told not to delete lines, so I left it there and people probably put money in it.
Yeah. Yeah, he raises continues.
It's like life insurance too, not life insurance, but long-term disability, people will budget for long-term disability and their offices aren't even eligible for it.
Oh, then you can do that.
No long-term either? No, no, there, there, there probably is for him.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I, I just using that as an example, if you leave those lines, that's why I was taking them out, people will put money in them. And they're not even eligible.
Brady. Like what veterans' donation services are?
Uh, um. Be their gas cards that they give out. They'll buy gas cards and get multi- guides that are going.
Okay.
But. The VA will.
Oh, yeah, love the docking plans.
Steph, have we done any separating out on, Tony was asking about. Um, building insurance, are, are we, have we done any of that with anybody, this like EMS or anybody else, do we break them out? Have we, have we?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. But his was added in this year and it was just added after the renewal. Trying to think if we actually got a bill yet with their building on there, but it was based off of to make it the most fair percentage increase across all the departments. Like the sheriff's department is paying for the square footage. And then nine one one is paying for all the content of the buildings, so it kind of, so.
We don't have a number for him, yeah.
Um. I'm gonna have to ask Tina if we've got a newest building, because she's got a. Worker magic in her spreadsheet to.
Let's make that a next year problem.
So for add the line item and put budget for two, uh, for twenty-six?
I don't see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is gonna be building insurance?
Yeah, put that five hundred there instead.
Okay.
That way it has something in there.
Okay.
What's it called in the other ones? We should keep it the same.
I will, I'll make sure, I have to be uniform with the state Michigan.
We have, we, we give them a pass on the pass.
It's not on there. There it goes.
It depends who are every veteran. It depends who are every veteran for three companies turning a pencil. Yeah, we, we came to agreement last year.
Ready for that, that's ran first page, six lines up.
I wonder if either of them have. Three hundred on postage. When. They only spent, it appears to me, they only spent eighty dollars this year.
So I know each year they. They had an idea they're gonna do a mailing, but they're gonna do something. And you know, that building has tied them up, I am anticipating this year, the building's gonna be done, and then start doing some other things.
What's their fund balance?
What's their fund balance?
It's closer.
It's over a hundred.
Sorry guys, it's just a matter of.
I think, you know, with the indirect cost services, I think you can still find out what they're gonna get for their state grant. Maybe three thousand is appropriate.
They're asking, I don't mean they're asking, but they're projecting eleven thousand dollars for burial points.
I don't think they have a trying true method and know, I, I, it just goes back, they didn't, it goes back about a year.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'll tell you where I'd love to see, be able to have some, and that is not. Meaning to require the five thousand. From, um. Fund balance. That's impossible, but.
They do have a fund balance of two hundred and seventy thousand one eighty-five fifty-five.
Yeah.
They can have a five thousand.
And they are still. Looking at nine seventy, they're still gonna budget twelve thousand to finish that burden. Capital all the building projects, we're still spending money there. But it's come down considerably.
That's right, they did take a grant one year for office. And let's see their association use that. And just so you know, his um, board agreed for him to have a five percent increase on his wage.
Were it the same way as nine-one-one?
Nine-one, yeah, nine-one-one in library.
Well, they, that's their fund, so they have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there. Although I don't like the optics of it, because we're trying to save money. And we'll tell one department, you can't have that, and then these side. Committees are deciding on this, bigger raises, uh, because we, because everybody, because everybody else. Well, I mean, this isn't, well, and I got in trouble with that before. Because one time I thought we could leave stuff alone and then. Certain legal person told me, once you set this budget, that statutory and that's everybody's wages.
So if we set the. Increase, if they have to be across the board?
No, I'm just saying if. If it was appetite to go with a three percent on its raise, despite that board, but see, we not, we didn't find out what did nine-one-one get this year? For any negotiation.
No, she got three, she got three percent.
That one to three?
I calculated a very good percent. We are bored, she did not set that, the board set that salary, the three percent.
I understand, that's, that's the debate that I'm having, if there's a, little, his board set a five percent.
Let, let me talk to them.
He did, and he didn't ask for that. Tony did not ask for that. So do you tell me?
Yeah, but you're sure gonna notice when we.
He knows he got it, but he, he didn't request it. But he is aware of it.
I believe where it is, you know, it's changing it like next week.
There are any more changes here, but yeah.
There's a part of.
Yeah, we've talked about it Thursday.
So you have the table then? An individual has their own budget. As he does. And his or her board sets a figure. And they're managing it financially in a prudent manner. Corn to say. Anyone, if you've got multiple companies. That are all, all his parents come on, which is what we have. Then the company that's doing, company D that's doing very well, managing their money. Getting the jobs done, et cetera. Why would we focus with the same lens? As the company that's losing money, their jobs are not being done adequately. We really shouldn't, I don't think, compare them with the same set of lens.
Yeah, I agree with the apples and oranges thing, but I think. We're looking more at trying to make it all appear equal.
Life is not.
Fair?
In his situation, he's the only person.
Says we're trying to make it equal. I would only say this, I, I, I did not give them information that we're trying to keep it at three percent. So let me give that to them, they may say, oh, well, we didn't know that, we just went with. A number, I don't, I don't think it's a, hey, we'll do what we want. I think it's just, maybe that's what they did last year, so I should do it this year, so let me, let me just talk over them and see if they're.
I don't have a problem.
But, okay, so we, if I won't be an issue anyway, but, yeah.
Okay, anything else for the VA budget? Um, we're going to the, uh, and Jennifer's here, what, what did, um, personnel didn't meet with Jennifer and. There's some adjustment Sheila that we had to talk about in the finance meeting this afternoon. Um, for their proposed wages for non-unions.
Okay.
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 Uh, versus what was proposed by them versus what we talked about.
Okay.
So. And when, I do want to have finance meeting going down here, by the way, frankly. Um, so anything below that, though. Uh, I will also make a note that pursuant to the handbook for next year with the policy on comp time, they all, uh, Jennifer is, uh. Is. Budget accordingly to that, so. But, uh, Jennifer, is there anything that you wanna speak to on this that stands up for you?
So I guess one thing I did wanna mention, uh, with regards to salaries was our. Scheduling and assignment clerk's salary is not showing, and I just sort of thought about this today. That we are now squaring the cost of that with the child care fund. So the one-on-one budget will be reduced. By an over eleven thousand dollars on that position, so I can get with you on that, because. We've never before thrown part of that position to the child care fund, and I don't know why, so I feel like we should. And they've agreed to it and accepted it, uh, on the job for my budget back in August, so we need to take that adjustment. The who, the one-on-one budget, okay, so we'll be back for that.
Can you just send me the numbers?
I'm just gonna adjust it and I'll send it to you, okay. Um, are you looking at one-on-one?
Yeah, we're all one.
The main changes that I've made to one-on-one is I've added my. Um, I have added overtime, it presented a conversation regarding comp time and that thing, and we have not had overtime budget for some, probably since I've been. Up here working. Um, the other thing is I have kind of amped up. Our jury line item, and I think we all understand, at least having conversations with finance over the last two years. We've not been able to stay within the budget for jury, the other item that has been. Changed a little bit, a lot of it is legal fees and probate, we have not been able to sustain the budget for that, um.
Can you give them line item numbers when you're, so they can see?
Sure, jury is.
Legal fine.
Yeah.
Yep, and appellate, our legal fees probate is eight oh one oh four eighty. I had to come back to finance to ask for more money than that last year and this year, so. Um, we're just not, that's also random, that's not something we can predict, we might be right back where we were, but I. Remind standing prefer that I ask for it now rather than later, so I'm asking for it now for that change. The only other thing that I think has a substantial difference, we asked for a little bit extra for like approximate. For the, um, for appointed counsel for family court. Um, just staying in line with a simple three percentage raise for them, and we have a little bit found extra for that because. Sometimes we have to have bring in a fourth counsel for depending on the case, so that's what the little extra is on that. But otherwise, I think it's pretty much clear what, what, but those are the large, mean large differences. Appellate counsel is an interesting, which is eight oh one oh two three, so. What has changed with appellate counsel for reports is we're getting reimbursement for that now. For partial of those expenses, and so we are seeing some compensation for those expenses, which is nice, it started last year. Um, it's hard for me to anticipate what those reimbursements are yet, because I don't see them at all. At all, I don't know what they're sending, I haven't, so I need to get with you, Sheila, to see, I need to know what it looks like when it's coming to you. I just know that they're starting, they've started doing a reimbursement for that, they're also not asking for the judge anymore to authorize. And, uh, stepping up in your office will see that they're not asking for the judge to authorize appellate counsel bills anymore. They are randomly doing it at the MAC system, which is the, um, company that appoints appellate counsel, that's through MAC. And they are doing the, oh, we have an attorney on, online that's, uh, on staff that is. Reviewing those bills, so what basically right now, the way it's always been is a judge can look at an appellate counsel bill and say, we're not paying all that, or we are paying all that. And approving those, whereas now they're not asking the judge to approve those anymore. And I think because there's probably so much statewide disparity on what a judge will approve or not, that they are trying to simply do that. In line with the fact that they are now reimbursing counties for these costs too, so I think that's what that's all about. I just wanted to explain that. Um. But we have been going over, uh, so one thing that has changed in the state sheet, and this has been, we've noticed it for about three years now, is every time. That a felon is sentenced, the judge is required to offer appellate assistance immediately, immediately. And before they had to on their own make that request, so they all do, if they're incarcerated, they all are making a request for review of their sentence. And so that has increased our expenses for appellate counsel. Yes, every single person who is incarcerated on a felony sentence is offered appellate counsel. Sometimes, depending on the assist, the, 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 the appellate council system. We don't have to pay, they give it to the sale, it is just the state public defense office, they do. That cost, but sometimes it's a random decision on whether or not we're gonna, which is why I believe we get reimbursed for part of these costs, because we don't always get a state attorney. So it's kind of a complicated situation, but we are getting reimbursement for it, so that's at least helpful. But I don't think I got any other alarmingly large changes. Um, from last year to this, as far as the one-on-one.
Jen, I just did have one question when I was entering, um, these numbers, when I looked at telephone. I didn't see you budgeted anything for telephone and you did spend six thousand thirty-six dollars, and so is that not?
No, that's not right. I think that, all right, we'll just put that in there, because I was gonna check to see what those costs were going to be for next year.
Okay.
Cause that's accounting expense.
That's all, that's all, I, I didn't know, maybe you were just adjusting things maybe with the other brands or?
I didn't know.
Okay, so to be honest, I didn't know what the kind of cost was going to be this year. We were trying to do it for some of like the basic offices, just to help out, and then it got into. Cell phones and some offices actually get four different bills.
Yeah, I do.
And then reimbursement, so probably John would be the best one to help you get closest to your actual.
Yeah, and I can get that answered really quickly, so sorry about that. It was kind of like, oh, this is a, no, I don't wanna help no more, okay, forget it.
Is there any more questions for the one-on-one? All right, let's look at the two-fifteens.
One of the biggest changes. Eight fifty telephone, you don't have anything, you must, you may have commented on it, but you.
Yeah, we just, she's gonna get with John and figure out what's going on with that. Two fifteen.
No real changes on two fifteen other than, um. Last year. Are the, um, the reimburseings for actual counties. I actually did not finish that first, I had asked last year for, we have fifty-five hundred dollars of what we've already did. Last year I asked for twenty thousand and I didn't quite get it, but we have spent ten thousand four hundred forty-five. And I brought in about fifteen for that, and so that is something we do get a sixty-seven percent reimbursement on when that happens, I. Messed up on this part, I'm really sorry about that, so I will have to fix, I thought I had saved it and fixed it, and I apparently sent you Sheila a copy that I did not have it saved, and I'm sorry about that. You're showing a revenue from the general fund of eighteen-five sixteen one. Yet that's not. What it is. They need to be the same number.
They have to be the same number, and I don't think I have my current sheet with me right now, so I, I know that they have to be the same number, so I'm.
Um, what is the question?
I don't think I have the right one sent to you, is what I need, the one that I sent to you, I don't think is correct. I know.
I mean, I'm only talking about sixty-one dollars.
Okay.
But it's, it's.
Hundred percent that balance, I understand it has to be balanced, and it's not.
Are we talking about two fifteen?
I'm looking at.
And you're saying it's not balanced?
Two fifty, that is what I'm saying.
The number, revenue and expenditures?
The expenditure is the one-on-one.
No, 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 this is two fifteen fifteen. Next budget over. Okay, so.
No, I'm sorry.
Was there a change made in the two fifteen, Jen?
I need to make an employee cost reimbursement, so I ask for how many, I missed that. And it will be reflected in revenue to be balanced. I mean, uh, one thing I did change, it's the F O C director's boss are zero, uh, Stephanie and I talked about that. I've done some changes, and so we get a better reimbursement from child care fund now than we do from F O C, so we've taken. After talking to your judge about that, so that's why you're seeing a zero there.
Um, didn't the F O C. Entry go with what the county employees were gonna get, the non-union?
There's no changes in the way that you, you answered. They are with the, with the union, yes, it should be three percent based on, and they also had, they're still under step levels. They're still within their step levels, that's what it is, yeah.
Um, I, when I'm looking at, um, employee, um, share for health insurance. I just got these numbers like within an hour before we came down here, and I show that there is. That is six, seven, seven, zero, one, three in revenue. You have.
You have zero and I received this from the clerk's office and they're saying three thousand one twelve.
I don't.
Are you aware of that? Oh, okay.
I think we need to.
I'll get it. Okay, sounds good. And there's other numbers on here too, like um your health insurance. I just received this and uh your health insurance. Is saying twenty two thousand four seventy one. They're saying twenty three thousand nine thirty eight. But I don't know why it's more when we, I'm not sure. So I think we need to revisit your FOC. I do too, so because we have new numbers. Okay. Was I got?
Any more questions? Two fifteen.
We'll have that revamped and I'll have, I'll give it to you guys on Thursday.
Next up is one two six nine. Question there. One two seven four. A little more. You need uh.
No, this is a hundred percent grant based market. Um, I have nothing other than a, oh no, it doesn't have much adjustment from last year. Other than what we discussed earlier today, but that will be adjusted.
Yep. Okay.
Finals payments need double. Well, that's revenue. Do we've increased our rate by a hundred? Like filing fees?
Are you looking at two seventy four?
Yeah, six eleven. Went from four thousand to seventy five hundred. Actually doubled this year.
That is based on civil cases filing, filing solvency and I ask for county business reimbursement for that, so it was about to go to county. So just, they send us the check each month. So it's a percentage of the civil filings that come out, so and I do, I can't say for Alcorn District four. Our civil filing, they're up on that in there, so they're very in percentage of those, please say.
Jen, that makes me at, would question the participant fees then. Look what you brought in this year.
See, that's random.
Yes.
That is completely random.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if we went to, I mean, this, like I said, this is a balanced budget based on grants. They own all one hundred cents. That's extra money coming in. Um.
Most of our participants are not Alcorn County.
It's, it's, it, it's luxuries, but majority are IASCO, but that money comes to us from IASCO.
Right, right.
Right.
What's nice about that money is it gets put into an account that, well, if we don't have a grant, you may be able to divide on some of that, so.
More questions for two seventy four? Any question here, uh, Jennifer?
Which one?
Two ninety two?
No. Like I said, we pulled some of the salaries from juvenile register over and stuff, but other than that, it's pretty much. Very close to what we did last year. It was already approved for the charter fund budget was approved in August. Um, the board signed up on that budget when we sent it into the state. Cause they're on a fiscal year that, and those budgets are due on the fifteenth, and I think it came back for us in September and the board. Authorized out and to sign on.
Any questions on two ninety two?
The only question that I did have um was the transfer from general fund. Um, I know we're budgeting a hundred and ten thousand, which that's I think what we do historically. Um, I know that only thirty thousand is what was utilized. I know that's probably something that.
So I think what that boils down to when we send people into secure detention. We um did have somebody this year, but I think you don't, but that is there in place for you to, because those. Expenses aren't enormous, you know, happens. Um, we're fortunate that we only had one that had one this year and I think they were only there for a few days. Um, but that's, if that makes sense to you.
It does. It does. And I mean, on the flip side of it too, when we're looking at the twenty five budget. Since we've only utilized thirty thousand, it does. It does help, you know, as far as the twenty five, so.
Is there a fund balance in that account? No? Or you made that, is that been burned down, right? That fund balance?
I think we had a bill this year for. He was there for a week and it was. Five days. And it was, we actually asked the judge to let him back out. Cause it's, and that was, and, and we also have to page him to transport them there, which is a ton. Um, if we try to get anything in the state, there are none. There are none. There's just nothing. But this person was in Wisconsin. The night to get him there, the night to give the transfer back. Yeah. They're full. They're full. They're trying right now. Grand Traverse County is looking right now. I'm trying to get open and use your. Attention facility for you to mount, but it's, it's a statewide problem.
Also, Shaborey, you know, so. I think it's that healthcare and everything.
I think a lot of it is training of staff. Do you know what I mean?
There's a level of training that has been.
Jen, just so you know, you've got twenty five thousand. You to know for sure. Twenty five thousand fifty three dollars and ninety four cents.
That's the two ninety two fund balance?
Yes, twenty five.
Okay. Now, of course, for two ninety two. I think that a lot of funds, Jen. Two ninety seven.
Yes. You say, I have what?
You had a bunch of funds, man.
Oh.
I'm okay to say that's fine. Nine eight.
So. This one's interesting right now. Um, and I guess it's the conversation Carolyn and I had before about the public guardian. Situation. It's um, right now, our public guardian is working almost full time, which is the worst that we have right now. And we don't, we don't balance, we don't budget for a full time employee doing that. But she's averaging twenty five to thirty two, thirty three hours a week with her current base load. I'm just giving you a heads up of that. That's what I'm seeing on her pay budgets. And I typically budget for about twenty hours to her.
You have more people?
Yeah.
Oh.
And more intense needs with those people, so. Couple of years ago, we had some people who started their face load here and by the day they got moving. And I think understand why you need to continue to have services for someone in another county. We've gotten rid of that. And we looked at that, but we had those cases transferred out. But we're still, she's very busy right now and um. And paying attention to it, but I, I, I'm not really sure what there is that we can do about it. This used to be, this is like Caroline Dr. a few years ago. This used to be a situation that funded itself and it no longer can. A lot of um, the, the wars do pay him, um, but they do not, it's not, they're junior and the gent. And cannot afford to pay nearly what the costs are, what the costs are to run this program. So, but we do continue to collect and trend that those numbers end, so we're doing. As much as we can with them, so.
Is that your first line? Is that that revenue is the guardian or the wards that bring it? All on two ninety eight?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's what you typically get from their, their wards.
I mean, I think that transmetal, I can find on you, is not even two thousand dollars a month usually.
So much of the public guardian is based on gravel. I'm alive now. Was the adjustment made for the eight cents a mile, increase of eight cents a mile?
We pay um her sixty two cents.
Sixty two, right, but was the adjustment made for twenty twenty six for the increase?
No. No, cause I just learned about that an hour ago.
So I would think that needs to go up. Almost substantially.
I, I can look at her average mileage and see what we're looking at for that.
And so you know, the um public guardian um. The fund balances and when they get it right now.
I figured it would be.
Yeah, it's two thousand, two thousand four oh eight oh five. So we'll probably have to.
Yeah, we're gonna fix that so we can manage to get from the state.
No, that'll be fixed. Yeah. We'll have to pull that.
Any other questions for two ninety eight? Okay, last one, four seventy. Looking for a new location. Five thousand. Great for the fund balance, that thousand.
What is the fund balance?
Thirty four thousand four hundred fifty six.
Thirty four thousand dollars tonight? This is the building.
Reservation.
This is the fund where you get money for furniture stuff?
Yep.
Can I have thirty thousand dollars to pay for the roof at the sheriff's department?
Your office guard, but then.
Just saying. Walk in late, maybe I shouldn't have, right? I'll go back out. We got thirty, I'm just, I'm just asking out loud. Is that, is that available? Or is that, that's probably just a building, just a.
You use that as to the people?
Like it's for thank for the windows and all of those things that are happening with project. I think it's bought a boiler. Or it helped toward the boiler. Um, it's helped a lot. We all recognize, everybody helps from that, yeah.
The clerk's office. Because you won't know what you might get. Um, I do have a question about that, cause Adam asked for that with the um, the roof. Was that gonna be used for any of the security?
Oh, yeah.
The building preservation fund, the way it's set up is it can only be used for this building. That's on the limitation to the way that fund is set up.
Well, we can use it for security stuff.
We can use it for security stuff. We can use it for those kind of things, but it, the way it was set up originally, the way it was written and set up is it has to be used on this building. That was our limitation. If we can use it on the water service building, it can't use it next to the sheriff's department building, but we can use it for all of our projects.
I was gonna say, yeah, he made it.
Cause it was coming. I bet I don't know. I, that's why it's been set up since I, I know we went back and looked at this originally.
Logically.
Where they reconfigured. Well, yeah, cause I heard you guys talking about it. Well, I gotta come down.
Logically, it's this building.
Correct.
I know.
I, I didn't. Thirty four K in there, yeah, that's, that's something we all keep in mind. Hey, thanks for scampering down here.
I was feeling really uncomfortable. Thank you.
Any more questions for four seventy?
I would like to go back to.
Okay.
Years ago, two ninety two. We were supposed to end this through many, many days. One in half of the total costs in two ninety two were to be scheduled to come from the general fund. It did not, that didn't always happen because as we all know, it's very flexible. It's. Within those funds.
For sure.
The moves. That is no longer.
It's seventy five twenty five now.
Seventy five twenty five, thank you.
Seventy five on state.
Right.
I'm not sure if you know that's.
Oh, yeah, I noted that part out, yeah. Thank you.
Any more questions for Jen? All right, like I said, what type of the, well, we discussed the gen earlier and our financing, so.
Yeah, I'll get with Jen.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
That's why we do this.
Think you need some new numbers too, so I'll make sure you get them. I double checked the salaries too with Tina when I ran upstairs. And I didn't realize the director even gets staff increases. Cause of their, how, how they are, but they get the staff because it's not like a percentage base. They went with the three percent, but then plus they still get their. So whatever yours they get.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause I'm like, that's, that's way more than three percent, but it's because they have. Whatever your steps are.
So, are you pitching?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And then uh Trina was double checking the health.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. My excuse.
You're absolute.
Thank you.
For now.
For now.
Paul Firing over there though from Josh. Uh, personnel? Do we have a, what was session? That, anything else to say, Ken?
No, we're continuing on with uh, we set a date. I seen in the, look for the uh, Oman. Negotiations, I think with way it looks, so hoping can wrap both up. Demand the end documents in that meeting on the tenth of December. Depending upon how our process goes there.
Okay. Uh, Carol, Treasury report. Cheryl.
Sheila.
Okay, I'm all right with that. Um, I think we have a whole lot, just a few things. Um, we finished wrapping up with the. Working with the treasurers and setting up their roles. Um, that's all been completed. All their. Middle rates have been verified with the county and um winter bills have been mailed out of some. It's required by law, they be mailed out by December first, and I think everybody's starting to get them, because we are even giving calls. In regards to that, so just a heads up, your winter taxes are now out. Um. Moving on that, just working on a lot of budget stuff and um we did have seven cases that. Um, do go to court for the proceeds. Um, we did settle and um. Gonna be disbursed, we did. We've already requested the disbursements for all of them to be paid out. So it'll be a total of about a hundred and three thousand. And other than that. Damn busy.
So, any questions for Sheila? All right, then, Detective clerk's report, please.
I played catch up this morning on, on emails and uh, these packets that Trina put together yesterday. I was at a conference over in Crowder City. And um, our lobbyist was there to speak to us in regard to, you know. House bills. He also spoke a lot about the proposals on petitions that are going around. He honestly has like the nine major ones, like the rank mine vote and uh, acts attacks. And all of those. He foresees possibly one of them actually going on uh, with passing signatures and everything. Um, I know some of them, they require like six hundred thousand signatures. We have to get within a six month allotment. So um, that was a little bit of good news for, for us. One big thing we talked about at the conference, which was yesterday, um, back when they did. One big thing we talked about at the conference, which was yesterday, um, back when they did the automatic set aside. Uh, for those where they changed how many misdemeanors and how many felonies you could have. Uh, they did that mass, uh, MSP did that mass automatic set aside. And what it seems to have done now in the CPL portal with, between our, the, our portal that we utilize. To process CPLs and the Michigan State Police. Is that a lot of those that will put into deferred statuses are sending out and generating renewal applications. On people that are officially not eligible. Um, so MSP was there and they, they were really getting hit hard from, uh, a lot of the local clerks. Um, and a lot of those that were put into deferred status, whether it wasn't done from county level. Properly or another county or by the Michigan State Police as well. Um, so there's some major, uh, I learned from another Livingston County clerk that when a date. Appears out of whack on our, um, renewal letters. And it has a PIN number on it that it generates, that we need to be pulling and those out and now verifying that those people are in fact suspended. There's a problem with renewals versus reapplications. Um, this is going to put a lot more work on Brooke who processes the majority of the CPLs, she does the renewal letters and processes all the new. Uh, CPLs every Friday. So, um, she's going to have her hands full there for a little bit. Um, Trina's getting ready to work on open enrollment, which starts this Friday on December fifth. Um, the new benefits at a glance are out there, um, they were sent to department heads. Um, so people can see, you know, if they're going to change or they want to change, uh, what their rates are going to be come open enrollment. And, uh, Tina's trying to get as ready as much as she can with the final wrap up of the payrolls. We had a couple payroll issues that we figured out, um, getting ready, she's got forms for the ten ninety nines and the W twos. And, um, for all the new rates to go into effect, longevities, buyouts, all that good stuff. One of the other things from the conference when they were getting so hard. Um, the newer person that was speaking up on the podium, on the stage and the podium. Once she saw the, uh, veteran person trying to deflect all these questions from the clerks, are you, are these people going to be reimbursed? And you, all of a sudden you hear kabam and you turn around and the speaker's passed out. And so there was no more questions to the Michigan State Police and that was the end of our meeting and we left. So we were dismissed from the, the rest of the meeting, so. You know, she was a new, I don't.
And immediately.
Speaking of, speaking of.
All right, did you fall asleep or do?
No, it, it was a lot. Little catch back there, that's happened a bigger before, I hate these chairs.
Uh, and basically the rest of the conversation was, uh, in regarding twenty twenty six upcoming elections. Um, other than that, the last thing I have is the CBIS report, so. How I said when we, it reflected the increase in those, if it was gonna. And then we were, and then I received an email, he goes, okay, well, I'll send you an invoice, and I went. I thought this was going to happen maybe at renewal, but, um, no. There was a bill. And if you see in your communication, that last bullet there, they're going to waive twenty percent of what the additional cost was. Uh, we do see the new amount due to the CDO's report, an amount of six thousand five hundred and forty seven dollars.
That just catches up for twenty five? Or is that, we'll see a whole new one in twenty six?
I, I'm thinking that's it, I can get that confirmed because if not, this bill's going to have to get paid out this year. But I'm thinking it was a. Twenty percent of the additional cost. Of these changes. So I'm thinking this is the total. Of what is after twenty percent of just this year. I don't think that there will be, that's how I read, read it, excuse me, so I don't think there will be another bill next year, but. I can verify that, so just a heads up for finance and. That we may need to be coming up with this additional amounts of money, but I'll confirm that with Seth and in you.
Any questions for Bethry? Uh, Sheriff's report.
It looks really long, but I'm not sure either it isn't, I just decided to go a little bit. They're not real cool, going fourteen point five today. Yeah, one piece of paper, front back.
Bash down, that's where it is.
I'm sorry.
Um, brief update on training for the year, we've done about five hundred and fifty hours of training this year, which is fourteen per officer. Uh, the fourteen officers you see include the under sheriff and I, the two part time guys are also required to keep up on their, um. The required twenty four by the state. So we far exceeded that, there'll probably be a few more hours trickling in here towards the end, just to wrap up a couple of things, but that's, uh, that's pretty good numbers, that's pretty impressive for the year. Um, the last two people I had to get into this active shooter or active aggression training are my part time guys. It came from other departments that didn't have it before they left there, so we got that in towards the end of the year, we did a dual training with I O S C O County, we did it at the fire hall in Barton City. Worked out pretty well, they got, um. They got that, that's, that's one of the things that used to be, you only had to qualify with your firearm once a year. For emplers, now you also have to have this on their record at least once that you have, have that, had that training. And now you have to have the twenty four hours of continuing professional education too, so. They also included in that is two firearms qualifications this year, I mentioned that other times that we do one day time and one night time each year. Why do we do all this training? Because of what happened in the next line item there, they had a shooting in, uh, Preskill County on Thanksgiving Day, if you're not aware. It was a pursuit related incident where the pursuit began in Preskill County, uh, bled down in Alpine County. They had the vehicle stopped and the suspect got out and pointed a shotgun at the deputies and he was, uh, he was shot by the deputies at that point. Um, and that's why we do so much training, e- especially the firearm training and use of force, big deal. The interesting thing on that is there's some venue issues with that, it sounds like they worked it out really well, but started in one place and ended in another with a couple of, um. Gun related incidents, one by the suspect and one with the, with the deputies firing on him, so pretty, pretty interesting case, it's going to be, you need to see how that plays out. Unfortunately, I think Alpine County is going to get, uh, the brunt of the cost of that associated with the inmate because I think it's going to end up being charged in Alpine County. Even though it originated in Preskill County and they're going to end up with an inmate that's, uh, that's been shot several times. Yesterday, I met with representatives from Partners in Prevention. If you're not aware, they're kind of a, a, a mental, mental health advocate group up in Alpine now. They're pretty active and what they're working on is a, a community website, or they call it a map where you can go in and kind of look for resources on there. They've got the one pretty well done for Alpine County and ours is kind of a skeleton, as is Mount Rancis and Preskills. And, uh, I worked with them quite a bit on that yesterday and ours, ours is lacking, needs quite a bit of work. Our website needs updated, our website still shows Mr. Whitehead is our prosecutor and we're getting upset with him for not calling back. And I had to, I had to excuse him for that because he hasn't been in office for a while, so. There's some things that have to get updated, but, but basically what this, what this map is, is focused on. Uh, deflecting mental health issues and emergencies away from police response to other people's response. Which we're all happy with that, as long as it's not something criminal nature. Uh, but also if it is criminal nature and we have to respond and make an arrest. To deflect that out of the criminal justice system towards the mental health system instead, but as you're well aware. There's a real shortcomings with that, and I know that you've talked about it at some length about the private visitation of, of the mental health system. And really, I think you guys are right, this is really not something that can be done by the private sector and not done well, it's really got to be something done by the, by the government sector. Um. And they, they agree with that too, but they're looking to deflect a lot of these cases out of the criminal justice system and away from police response. There really isn't great responses when the police get called, either go to jail or you go to the mental. Right now, trip to the mental ward means that we're giving you a ride back or you're getting home before we are from up there because they're just, they're just not taking it in, it's sort of a sad situation.
Yeah, this, is this same age or is this?
No, this is Partners in Prevention, it's a different group, um, very similar to Catholic Human Services. And one of the, one of the ladies on this committee does work for Community Mental Health, so she's, she's very well versed in it.
Just trying to.
Yeah, Cara Bowers, are you familiar with Cara Bowers? Yeah. Joel Bower's sister, so it is. She, she's a great head for this group and for the mental health community. Just a brief, uh, Sheriff's Association update, we, we had a, uh, meeting last week. Board of Directors meeting and tomorrow I have a District Two meeting in Grayling. And, and we also do with the Northern Michigan Mutual Aid meeting at the same time, uh, at the same place, just so we can get both meetings out of the way at the same time. And if you're not aware, the Mutual Aid team is what we use for, for a dive team, SWAT team and solo disturbance. God forbid we need that. Didn't put it on the list, uh, because maybe somebody else would cover it, but we did have a nine one one authority board meeting yesterday where we approved their budget. Don't think there's anything else of any real significance, I had to leave to go to the courthouse security meeting halfway through it, so. Craig's already mentioned the contract negotiation, so I won't hit on that again. Uh, did our employed recruit status, he's passed all of his testing. Medical physicals or medical psychological hearing and vision testings are in progress, I expect those to be just fine. Um, I have a pre, a pre-service employment agreement that I drafted up or. Copyrighted from another, uh, another county, Mr. Whitehead has already looked at that and, uh, we've straightened out all the legalese on that already. So that'll be ready, I'll probably have that for the next meeting or you, uh, to look at that, I'll get it out to you ahead of the meeting so you can review it ahead of time. And we'll probably be looking for a signature on that at the next meeting unless you have another special meeting between now and the end of the year. We'll want to have that in place before, before January first.
Definitely, I was supposed to meet next Thursday.
All right, okay. You, would you want to entertain that agreement at that time or do you want me to wait till the next special? Doesn't matter, I just, I need some of your help before he gets over there.
We're gonna do that.
Okay, sounds good. We had a courthouse security meeting yesterday, uh, that went well, we, uh, an update is that. Uh, if you're not aware, the department heads are, are aware of this, that I sent out an active, active shooter or active violence training. Uh, some of that for the employees to do on their own, um, individually, then we'll come back later on and I, I think I might do it. Office by office, so we can be very specific on, uh, evacuation routes, places to hide objects in your office to fight off a, an offender with. Um, I think that might be more practical and at some point I want to, I want to come in and, uh, not to alarm anybody, but I'd like to shoot off a few blanks in the building. So people know what it sounds like, what gunshots sound like inside of this building, they're quite a bit different than what you'd think, they really, to me, they sound like a slamming door. Rather than a gunshot. Um, the first training we did here and the first training we did at the high school. I really wasn't sure the exercise was under, underway when I heard the gunshot because I thought it was somebody slamming a door, didn't sound like a gunshot to me at all. It's not like being at a range, um, it's not like shooting, shooting a firearm in the woods, it's a little bit different. And I think, and I think that's the shocking part about it, I think we maybe saw some of that in the video we watched a couple meetings ago. That we're in the courthouse and we was really sure that was gunshots going off for a second until they go. Well, that gunshot, and then they heard repetitive gunshots and that's kind of when it all clicked in for them. Um, we talked a little bit about the ca, the kiosk and security project. We're kind of holding on that to see where our budgets go and everything like that, uh, but we're ready to rock and roll wherever you guys are. We also talked about a panic button system that's going on and John has told me he's going to be able to get some, uh, homeland security funding to help us out with that. It's based on eight hundred megahertz radio technology and it put up to about twenty buttons in the building, uh, which is going to cover all the offices. And, um, they do something very similar at I O S C O County, but it's not eight hundred technology, it's either low band or high band technology, which, uh. I guess to the layperson doesn't really matter. But high, high band and, and low band radios just aren't used anymore, eight hundred megahertz radios are used everywhere. And we've pretty much gotten rid of all the other technology now replacing with the eight hundred megahertz, so. The skinny on it is probably a little bit better than the, than the old stuff. And our jail agreement, I got a call from down there today, they're, they have their important meetings in the morning on every other Wednesday, we have ours in the afternoon. And the question came up, they're, they're waiting to hear back from us on if, if we're ready to go. Their, their budget like ours, uh, relies on other people and, and this portion of it relies on us, so. They're kind of hanging on to wait, waiting to hear from us on that. That's the extent of my report.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you. Thank you.
They're small, I swear to you. Again, that's. Thank you.
Thank you for this, it is built, so it's going to be worth and worth.
The anticipation that you seem to. It's a little pensive. Unfortunately, I've run out of material, but I could probably start lighting still out there.
I just need to bring me a small bit of.
Please, can you bring any other facts or any other board members that?
There you go, there you go. Well, that being said, committee reports, we'll start with Carolyn today.
My snowbound. Thanksgiving. But besides that, I think we've lost to the Department of Labor. Um, Clive has a meeting, the COA can include the board, December twelfth, they will be approving our budget. Um. The opioid event, and I believe I made each a, um. Handout on the, it was next Wednesday. Uh, ten o'clock, I'm sorry, that's, uh, four o'clock in the, um. AC COA building. And, um, it is a presentation by, uh. Hardly on some use of the. The right venue. Relatively uneventful. Um, it's a COA meeting, having nine one one meeting. And there was discussion regarding mass, well. Determination as to. Selection. And what, what was it called?
I think that was, or very simple, totally very simple of that.
Uh, apple. Bridge, I don't quite remember the name. Um. Yeah, well. We are looking at purchasing and going into, um, the early part of next year. And one of the things that we'll do is to want to notify all employees. For a group of employees and we'll be able to do that, so if we're going to close for the day. That information will go out on this mass notification. It can cover road closure, it can cover, um, an accident. It can cover. Anything we need to do for a mass notification. Uh, if we have tornado or something coming through, it will go out to the entire area would, would be affected by that. So, um. Kathy's done a lot of research on the different options and has come up and is recommending this one and I think. Was the review of the materials she presented, I think the board was. Everyone. On the board was, um, in concert with this particular one.
That was a handy. The other song.
Terry, I had a meeting with the, uh, material management plan. Thing, uh, we're doing, they're doing a survey. Of the coming, um, what we put out online. Uh, for you to vote. Where you want to recycle centers to be, or feelings about it. The other thing, I've been contacted by townships reference felt. And I would like to make a motion at this time. That we drew the default funds. At twenty five percent to be arranged. By their, or be handed out by their. Where the user. Um, by proportion to what they have in their townships. With motion.
Uh, I'll second based on the fact that what's right now. But only for this year? So you're just reviewing it for the next year?
It will be, you would be giving the money at that time, yeah.
Saver.
Move to table that based on completion of finding where we are going to make almost two million dollars of cuts. Out of the twenty two, twenty six budget.
You motion to table?
Is that what you said?
Yes. A table until after completion and solutions for twenty twenty six general fund budget.
Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Well, the second is, um. I'll, I'll favor.
I.
Hi.
I'll remember, we'll call it, yeah.
Johnston.
No.
Small.
No.
Brady.
You. Thank you. Uh, ever, da, 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 yes.
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 Brian.
Yes.
Maybe my bag act like, hey, thanks, Larry. So let's table for now.
It will be bad.
Anything else, Terry?
After we have found the solution.
Good luck with the solutions.
Got any else, Terry?
Nope, that's it.
Wow, what are you guys?
Um, building department update, um. Sheriff's Department, they're gonna start next week. You just found the salt after lunch. So they'll be bringing a lift Friday there, so they'll be starting next week. They were waiting on some of the materials, I think, so. And obviously they must have came in, they're gonna start next week.
For the roof, you mean, for the roof, got it.
Um, court security, like, uh, Sheriff Stevenson said. It's about fifteen, a little under fifteen thousand for that system. Um, and John was looking into different, uh, avenues to get that money for that. Uh, we did talk about also, uh, Dave did, uh, in the court security meeting on. Making like, uh, the entrance in the spot downstairs, making like, uh, best of you. Um, whether or not we have our security going forward. We need something in there to have a windbreak, because in the winter, every time you open that door, it just like cools it down. Um, so we're, we're in the middle of looking at if we have to get drawings. He thinks he can do that in-house. He's talked with Harry Harvey already. Um, and with Russo and Oscar Talas. And it's, he's thinking it's about ten thousand dollars. Um, he can do that in-house, and that might be part of the building preservation fund.
Ten thousand, wanting to build a wall, insane.
Right here, underneath that. Um, and then, uh.
Maintenance cost.
Very minimal. Not too much.
People are working for free.
Well, the building department's gonna do that.
Just walk.
It helps.
Yeah, I'm going right away.
Tentative cost.
Around ten thousand.
For Ben Chena.
Oh, he didn't give the cost to me.
No, I, I'm talking about Ben Chena.
We didn't talk about maintaining it.
I think that's part of the, plus, maybe.
I, I mean, it's gonna be part of maintaining the whole building. But that isn't, let them give me that, so. Anyways, uh, I had another mission.
Again, one million, what?
Northern Michigan Association's County Meeting. Um, actually, it's, uh, we had a speaker talking about homelessness in Michigan. Thirty-three thousand, two hundred twenty-six thousand homeless people in two thousand twenty-three. In Michigan, and one out of every ten homeless people was a child through K through twelve. And they're just talking of different options that they have going forward. Uh. Ninety-one percent of them that were in, were homeless was because of traumatic experience. So that's, we've been trying to come up with, that's what they're always trying to do, is come up how solutions to get them out of that sys- system. Um, and then we actually always, and we certainly have, what do we want to look for next year? Every single commissioner, number one on the list was funding. And, uh, we'll ask my tax and all this different stuff, but funding was the main thing, and as, uh. They want to put together a road trip to Lansing while they're in session. To speak with our people, and that's, it's so they know what's happening in Northern Michigan. Um, so that, that, that was, I think it was probably a really good thing, whether what'll come out of that, I don't know, but. That was, quote it. Uh, so we had one, we, the HD met last week, um. So, not, not a lot of different, um, negotiations already happened on wages. Um, they did, there is some legislation in, in Lansing right now, I didn't even. Catch the significance, well, significance, the irony of it at the time, so. There's a couple of Republican and Democratic representatives that want to have. Uh, an alert to come on your phone, much like the Amber Alert, so. In, in the occasion where a municipality has to have an emergency discharge of their sewage lagoon, which has happened, or it overflows. Or something that goes into a river, goes into somewhere, they would like to have a new brown alert. Oh, I didn't even think of the brown alert, but. That's funny, um. So, anyway, they were, uh, they're not in favor of many people, aren't they? They feel like it reduces the. You know, it, it's not, shouldn't be added in the Amber Alert, you're gonna get a thing on your phone that says, hey. You know, there might be sewer in the water, so that was, that was kind of a chuckling thing, that's ongoing. Uh, I would, I would say since we've been in negotiation, we're talking budgeting too, so HD has the same issues with state funding. Um, shortage of funding, they were able to negotiate two and a half percent raises for everybody across the board, so both unions and. Like the, or the department head, so.
What ever happens to their request for the ten percent with four counties?
Nothing.
Nothing came up at the meeting.
What do we, do we know anything about what the other counties are doing?
Yeah, zero.
Zero, yeah.
All three of them are zero.
Well, I mean, we were based on whether, what everyone else was doing. Isco was at three percent. And Isco said they're, or will pay nothing because they have a fund balance, and Isco doesn't. So.
It didn't come up with a meeting, I assume it's just.
I think she's gonna take, they're gonna make cuts.
Yeah.
Because they already were gonna make cuts of fifty thousand. And this was gonna pay like fifty.
Yeah, nothing was mentioned this, I mean, the budget's in, and it's. There's a few things that are, I hear that for the multiple, services will be the same, so. And I don't remember if, did the last meeting that I let everybody know about the, uh, rec plan funding from, I'm scared, I don't remember. And that was it. Breakfasts are your packets, open color. Doesn't appear to be, now, I'll make a motion to go on a closed session.
Before we do, I mean, we're not conditioners, additional comments too, but, so I also, I didn't get the email to you all, but, uh. So, I, I have the ability to do it, but I know I had Julie will send an email to do the, uh, uh. State Park Grocery is doing, they have Eagle help them do some work down there, so. So Eagle's, it's not a grant yet, if it gets to the grant point, then we'll have to bring in the Brownfield Authority, but at this point. I'm gonna sign off on something that allows them to start a process. Of Eagle going in and starting to demo stuff and clean stuff and do stuff. It's all, we don't have to do any grant. Tracking or anything at all, we handle through Eagle, now keep you guys abreast on it, I think, uh. Marine and Mark have both signed a consent to enter, uh, labor work for them to get.
Area.
Who?
The owners, they were selling.
No, this is, uh, State Park Grocery, not the, no, this is a brand new project. So this is down by the ice cream shop, the corner, the old State Park Grocery.
Okay, but the others are also selling.
Yes, they are, yeah.
They were just, I think.
Yep.
They tried to add.
Well, they, they sold to a new owner who's gonna run it, has a canter, so. As far as I know, that's the last time I talked to Tom, he said they had.
Do you want to, whatever?
Yeah, Tom, why not, Hamilton?
Oh.
He had a pretty serious medicalist situation, so they're not able to run it anymore, but. He ran a new owner, I believe, and truly thought we had somebody. So, no, this is State Park Grocery down the corner. Um, so, Marine Sullivan and, uh, Mark Sullivan have some big plans there, and they. Wrote Julie and myself in, and we're gonna see what we can do to help them. And it may end up back at this board in the future, or some Brownfield grant coming.
Does a crack over paperwork for, we're supposed to charge that.
It is, yeah, but it's worth it. Yeah, definitely worth it, to get it backed on the tax roll and back, nice again. That's it, sorry. Yeah, I guess I gotta add something too, Scott, I don't, have you talked with Isco on that contract?
I haven't negotiated terms, but then wait, could we hear back?
Well, I know, I, so I talked to Terry Dutcher, and he said he didn't talk to him, but. He's like, uh, from what I know, he says, I think that your sheriff and our sheriff has some kind of an agreement. That is what he said Monday after that.
Yeah, the, the agreement, um. And I think I forgot to mention this in my presentation, is that Mr. Weiple has it, and he's looking at it for the legalese. To make sure that that's gonna be muster. I think it will, because it's the same verbiage that we had at the last agreement that he looked at. Uh, but he, he's not looking at the terms, so. Um, you know, as you guys are well aware, we're not authorized to negotiate terms and payments, uh, so we've been, we've kind of got to give the. That to you, or I guess certainly could throw numbers back and forth, and so he, they have to come from you guys. And I think that's the agreement he's mentioning, though, is that the written.
And then Isco, it talked about, I don't know if you heard about this, the Department of Justice. Pretty much some, some people in Talas at a motel.
Yes. Was, uh, Department of Corrections.
Yes.
Mission, yeah, so it was, it was, um, parolee, they got out, they knew it was a murderer. And, um, had nowhere to go, so they put him at the, I think it, Rose Ness? Or one of the, one of the hotels down there that they contracted with DOC, and he had no connections to the area, and he committed another homicide, well, well, he was parole there. So, rightfully so, the community and the prosecutor are up in arms down there, because he had no connections to that community, they paroled him there.
And I didn't, I don't think they even should inform the sheriff.
Not likely, I mean, they, they, they are supposed to send out an notice that parolees are coming to our area, and they have a pretty good bond here.
And we have our places to put them, so.
Was it a little bit of a two-legged phone, he was from Osso County?
This one was not.
This one was not.
No.
Okay.
No, but he, he did, he committed a homicide in Isco County, and they disposed of the body in Osso County. And maybe that's connection.
Yeah, I think he was originally maybe convicted in Osco Town. And then when he got out, they had a place to put him, so they put him in Isco County.
Yeah, my, my impression was that he was not ever from the Northern Michigan area.
That wouldn't make any good news.
Yeah. And this Osco Town is very, well, I don't, I don't think he was. Whenever you, uh, need a short recess for a real closed session, you can go straight into it.
Sure.
Okay.
Five minutes, alright, I'm gonna reset for five minutes. Take most recess for five minutes. All the favor. All the boys. Whatever.
There. I am also, it was too.
Those two.